Call to the regular meeting of Independence School District 695, Minnesota. Lisa, can you do your call for this?
Sure. Director Raja Satter?
Here.
Director Rice?
Here.
Director Krytis Simon?
Here.
Director Laffey?
Here.
Director Raha?
Here.
Your case.
Here. Anybody in the audience wishing to address the board? If not, we'll go to recognition of guests and visitors. Greg Hackerson from Apex Systems. And Jordan, are you gonna be his wingman?
I'm pretty equal.
Greg, your show.
So we've got, I think some of you have seen this already, so I've got a handout, right? But the short story is that in order to maximize the dollars you have in your referendum, we've got an opportunity to use the energy savings that are coming from closing some schools, as well as a couple other initiatives to fund some work that is gonna need to be done, such as the temperature controls, that's the big one. And then some destratification fans in the gym, kind of match, and some interior lighting for areas that aren't being affected by your referendum. So it's a great opportunity to leverage the dollars you have in your referendum for additional work, or really for the tax rate, or however you want to handle that. So what these two handouts show you, the first little one, the eight and a half by eleven, is the list of items that are included in this potential project. So the lighting upgrades, that would be, oh, hang on, I do my cheaters, it was great. The lighting upgrades, about $187,000, that would save, by doing that, that would save about $14,500, $14,250 in electricity costs, as well as about $14,800 in annual ballast bulbs costs that are going on right now. So that total would be about $30,000 in savings, so that work would pay for itself in six years. The building envelope, the ceiling, primarily your doors, it's 67, I think, exterior doors, about nine interior doors. So the exterior doors are keeping the conditioned air in, right, and the unconditioned air out, saves energy. The interior doors are primarily around your natatorium, around your pools, to stop the chlorine smells from coming out, as well as then the bus garage. So that's, that would save about $3800. Destratification fans, that is in the gyms. In the winter, we don't want stratification there, because the hot air's up, we have to overheat the space, keep the kids conditioned, more goes on your roof. In the summer, we actually turn those fans off, because the heat's going up is okay, because we want the cooler down. But that would save then around $1,500. And then the controls is the big one. This is the controls that needs to be done anyway, as part of the project. So there's a base bit of 1.2 million, and then a few alternates. And that then would largely be funded by, as we close, Vaughn and Chisholm Elementary, there will be about $101,000 the district is currently spending on energy, heating, cooling those buildings, that will be a budget reduction for you guys, savings. In addition, in high school, the steam and hot water conversion is gonna save almost another $30,000 a year in utilities. So you're looking at about $130,000 annually from those, which ends up with this project. So the bigger page really just shows the cash flow. And this is related to Mike Holhaisel, your FAFAer, said, okay, if we finance this, excuse me, over a 12-year term, the finance payments are down on the bottom there, towards the bottom, the third line from the very bottom. Those are negative numbers, so that's $157,000 in your one cost. But that goes against your annual savings in the first line of 171, so you end up at $14,000. The bar graph just shows each year that the savings you have exceeds the debt service payment, meaning it's not only budget neutral, it's slightly positive to the district. And there's a huge jump in that graph in your 13, because now the debt service falls off, and all of those savings, again, from the energy costs, from closing the schools, and doing the lighting, and so on and so forth, is now savings to the district. So this just shows the net cash annually that would occur if you did this project.
Any questions? Greg, I have one to start with, I guess.
Yep.
You said the controls, base bit, all one, one, B, C, and all two. Did I hear you correctly, said that those were initially in the plan?
They need to be done, we as.
Oh, that's not the question I asked you.
Sorry, right? So what, so what they need to be done, they weren't, they're in the plan, they're not in the referendum dollars, because the theory, we wanted to pull them out and see if this could be funded under the utility savings, rather than the referendum. If you don't do this project, this work still needs to get done, and it'll be funded by referendum dollars, which is okay, but the referendum dollars have an impact on your taxpayers. So if we fund it under this, through the savings, it's all, it either reduces your load on the taxpayers, or it provides you the ability to go, hey, if there's other things that aren't being addressed in the project right now, that should be done, this frees up dollars for you guys, and then it'll include it in that project. Did that answer your question?
That answered my question.
Okay.
And the guaranteed utility savings. So when somebody guarantees something, you're quite positive those will be the savings.
Yes. They have to be, otherwise I couldn't guarantee them.
Okay. Or any questions?
So Greg, when you say budget neutral?
Yes.
Basically, and I probably simplified this too much, but the savings that we're gonna have, that we're gonna have from not heating, including the building, and the steam to, or the, yeah, steam to hot water conversion, is actually going to pay the debt service?
Correct. And Mike went in, Mike Holhaisel went into a lot more detail on that.
Right.
Fun, so how functionally that would work, but yes, you're absolutely correct, you're going, it's money that the district is already spending on utility bills, that will go down, and will reallocate those, instead of spending them, or sending them back to the utility company, you're reinvesting them back into your facilities.
Right, making those changes that have to be made anyways, but instead, we're using those savings, as opposed to using additional referendum dollars where we could do additional add-ons or things that need to get done.
Correct. Yep.
So, okay. This is all Greek. That's why I didn't call Holhaisel, he just, he just. Anyhow, I highlighted a few things, you know? So from what I hear you saying is, our referendum dollars is 32 million, whatever, okay? Our bids came in really good.
Yeah.
Does this get taken out of our excess? In other words, our bids came in good, under budget, but we have to pay for this?
Not really. The, your bids came in under budget, you got excess.
Yeah.
That's set aside. You could reduce that excess by doing this work, or if you said you want to do this project, your excess stays the same, we get this done, because it's funded out of your existing budget line items for utility costs. So if we do this as a separate standalone project, it gets done, your excess stays the same, you don't change it, you can do whatever you want with that excess, or we have to reduce the excess, and this moves into that project, and it's not paid for by the savings.
So Mrs. Arley, it's capital, am I right?
It's capital projects, but it's not capital dollars, and that's where Holhaisel went into, is long-winded email. So basically, to summarize Mike's email, there's, in order to fund this through the energy savings, we can do three different things. We can go to a local bank and just say, hey, borrow us the money, and then we take that budget line item and send it to the bank, and, but that's the least attractive as far as interest rates go. The second one is certificates of participation. Generally, those aren't really in play after a referendum passes, because a referendum authorizes the board to spend a whole bunch of money and have to take out a lot of debt. So then, the COP, because your debt level is, you can do it, but the rates aren't as good. The third option is to bond for it, and that's where Mike said, that's your best rate, that's the numbers that are plugged in here. In order to do the bond, then he's got a little exercise there of just functionally how that work, would work of, the bond payments would come out of your reserve fund, and the energy savings would go, the energy savings go into the reserve fund, and then back out of the reserve fund to issue the bond payment, which keeps it budget neutral. There's just kind of a hop, skip, and a jump, and he kind of gets into, into the weeds and the details of that. Does that make sense?
To a point. Okay. And again, I don't like to put people up against the wall here. Jordan, the controls, which we knew had to be done, why weren't they in the original project?
So we discussed probably back in the DD phase, when we weren't sure where in the market was gonna land with bidding.
Yeah.
Bits could come in really high, they could come right on, they could come very low. Obviously, as you already stated, they came in very well for us. This was one of the levers that we wanted to have, in case we needed to pull it in the event that bids came in high. That being said, from our perspective, when we're looking at this after its bid, well, it's still a lever that can be pulled, to free up for additional projects or scope within what we've got going on here. So what we look at as, look at it as, is it's still a positive for the school district. It's just means to do more work under the current project.
So, on this diatribe by Holhaisel.
Oh, boy, now you're gonna be, okay.
Okay, so he's got here, operating cap revenue.
Yep.
Okay, 179,707.
Yep.
Okay. What, where do we, is we use that in this, or not?
That would be used to pay the bond, is that correct, Greg?
Yeah, the, which specific graphic, he's got like three little bills there. The very bottom one?
That one.
Yeah. The monetary revenue, the district receiving, operating capital, so that's different. So you've got 178,000 dollars in operating capital already that comes in, that's a separate operating budget.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Okay.
So what we would do is, we would add to that with the energy savings, okay? And then take the bond payments back out. To keep your 179 intact, we're just using that as a placeholder, so it's your 179 each year that goes into that, for your operating cost. We add the utility savings, which is 150,000, and out of it comes, well, after your, so we add the utility savings in, and out comes the bond payment.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So 179 stays the same, we're just using the same, 179 comes into a fund, it gets dispersed out, we're adding to that fund with the utility savings, but then taking out the fund for the debt service payment, which utility savings, as the graph shows, is still greater than the debt service. So your actual, you'll gain a little bit of headroom in that operating fund, that'll increase over the years until you're 13, then it wasn't a lot.
So I, I think, to oversimplify is, pay us now, or pay us later, or pay us more if you go through the local financial institution. My thought process is, why pay any interest rate at all by issuing another 10-year bond, when we've already issued a bond just for this project? And if the guaranteed savings are, as what Greg is saying, which would come in at about 160, I'll let's say 170,000 a year, NOAA creates a sinking fund for those savings, and that can be used into capital replacements, or things of that nature. I'm not real comfortable issuing another bond. That's, that's just my opinion.
My thought is, maybe myself, Noah, I'd emailed Mike Holhaisel's email to me, to Bob and Mark, because they're on the finance committee, just to have a look at it. So I mean, my suggestion is, we sit down, and maybe, whether it's the finance committee, we have three of us, three board members, myself, and Noah sit down, and maybe bring back a recommendation to the rest of the board this week, and then maybe we can make, get Mike Holhaisel on a full call, too, and see his thoughts, and.
Get him on the speakerphone, so we can all hear him.
So we have to do it, no matter what, it's just a, which way are we gonna pay for it?
Yeah, basically, the way I look at it, too, is, it's either, we're gonna have to do it, do we want to save some dollars for other projects at the, with this current project at the same time? That's, that's the way I look at it. Am I wrong in that, Greg?
No, and I think there's even, just to confuse it again a little more, there's, if the controls needs to be done, the lighting really should be done, doesn't have to be, and the destratification, but the controls is the great bulk of this, it needs to be done. There's two decisions. One is, do you just have that work go directly through Jordan and Injenta, which is great? Or do you want us involved, because we provide the guarantees, that's question number one. Question number two, then, is the funding. Do you want to fund it under a separate bond note, so that it's neutral and gives you headroom, or do you just say, hey, you've got capacity there, just use that capacity? Both those decisions are equally fine either way.
But this was an initial part of the project, and as Jordan stated, we're just kind of waiting to see where the bids fell, as to how to complete this, this portion.
Yeah, it was just due diligence on Injenta's part, because we've had, post-COVID, we've had a kind of bad track record in the construction industry, prices going up, and things coming over budget, so they went the extra mile to say, can we have some extra levers to pull, that if things do come over budget, how do we still get everything done you want? This was one of those levers to pull, as Jordan said. And whether you pull that lever, how you pull it, is entirely up to you, but it was always part of your project, is where do you want it to fall?
Not to interject too much, but just to go off that, it still could be, like what Bob was talking about, we've got money left over. Part of that money was meant for the controls, you know, if we had not gotten this route, we would have included controls, we would have bid them out, and that would have become this. So we do have that ability, it's just that piece underneath, that's money where it could be used elsewhere, or we can definitely add it to control. So I do see this as a positive for the project and doing district work under this construction phase. That being said, it's not required by any means either. We're, we're comfortable moving forward either way, we just need to put together bid packages for the controls, and go out to bid it, to convince that we bid it, and then award that, just like we did with every other piece of the current project. So we're comfortable either way, but again, another lever to pull, and house decision I hold.
So without Apex in this thing, we don't realize any savings?
Well, you'll still realize the savings, you won't, dependent on the scope, the schools are being closed either way, you're gonna get those savings, right?
The bond is, yeah.
Yeah, so those savings, you're gonna get away. Where it comes down to is, you're gonna get those savings, we're not gonna guarantee them if we're not able, and then the lighting and the destrat fans and that kind of stuff, we were guaranteeing, if we're not part of it, it's not guaranteed. But it's sort of just a question of going, where does that actual numbers come in? If we're involved, and for some reason, one year, you don't save the difference, we come back, we do an annual measurement verification, sit down with you, and if we're short, we ready to check to make up that difference, to keep you guys whole. If we're not involved, and you're short, you're just short, so.
As we move to the next question, too, so if it's guaranteed, you, it's guaranteed.
We sit down annually, yeah, per the contract, and do what we call a measurement verification, to measure and verify utility savings against what was predicted, and if we're short, if you're long, that's to the district's benefit, if we're short, then we write a check to make up that difference.
I agree with the chair about the bond, I don't think that that's the right way to go. We bonded and bonded, and there's people who are wound up about that bond, but it's here, and we're gonna start building. So you come to the taxpayer, and you say, again, hey, guess what? I, I wouldn't do that. We, I like to keep things smooth. So, Mark, I think you're right, both of you guys, we, we need to sit down and just come up with.
Some kind of process.
That's the process, I agree.
I, I wouldn't mind it, if we could get as many members here, and just call it working session.
Do that, too.
That's a great idea, absolutely, yeah.
Just how quickly we can get Mr. Holhaisel.
Sure.
Okay, I'll work on it, okay. Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That's great.
Mr. Vaki, item moving on, item four, or Jordan, did you have anything? Want to give a little update, or?
So the update I can give, yeah, I'll, I'll give just a quick one briefly, and where we stand today. Now, I talked with Mark and Mike last week when I was up. So the building permit itself has been acquired, is not held until building plan review is complete, so that is at the Minnesota Department of Labor Industry. They have picked it up, it is on their desk, they are asking questions, they submit them all electronically, online, so we can see them as they write them, but once they have them all ready, they'll send us a formal letter for us to formally respond back to. So we're picking away at the ones that are in there right now, but we haven't received a formal letter. So it's kind of waiting on the stage, and we're working ahead as much as we can to get that. Once that's approved, we have the permit, it's in Mark's office, there's nothing holding us back. At the same time, the city of Chisholm, I've talked with them, you know, there's, there's green, right, as far as work that we can do, I've clarified what's green, and we're doing everything that's green. So they're gonna be digging, probably starting, I'm saying, things are gonna start to look really, really different. So they're gonna be digging, they're gonna be taking out, and they're gonna be hauling in fill, clean fill for the building footprint. So things are really, really starting to jump, as of today, fence coming down, stuff like that. So even though we don't have a permit, the demo, the removals can commence, it's once you place anything new, as far as like concrete remars, stuff like that. So I think the way it's all gonna time out, too, with what we're out in the state, I don't really see that we have any delays or anything at this point, we're just cautiously doing what we can to move forward. That being said, yeah, we do have land work here. We, on our end, we have our site superintendent selected, his name is Todd Nero, he is relocating from out of state, and he will be onsite every day here, starting on Monday. We're gonna do a little bit of training this week, and we're gonna come up on Thursday and walk the site. I've got keys, so I'll get him familiar, and Todd will be our main point of contact for everything in the field. That being said, likewise, any issues or anything like that, that district parents, citizens, see, have them relate to Mark, and have Mark get it to us, to Todd and myself, and we'll work together to keep moving forward. But everything's looking good so far, I really, really can't complain about anything. Happy before we're at. One thing I do have is a question, is who covers for Mike this week, while he's on vacation, if anyone?
Mark? Sure.
They, I just talked to them for the meeting here, they'd like to get that playground equipment out of the way.
We're working on it, they're gonna work on it tomorrow, like they started, I talked to Ron today, so.
They said they're gonna start moving it tomorrow, as needed, I will let them know any others working on it. Otherwise, that's all I got, we're, we're well underway.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Um, did we ever discuss where the kids are gonna play in the fall, while they're building, and what's gonna happen? Because the teachers cannot have these kids in the building on hot days 24/7.
Yeah, we've discussed it.
Some kind of backup plan?
Yeah, we did, well, no, we've, we've discussed it, we haven't come up with an exact solution yet, whether or not, we let them go right outside here in front of the grass, I don't know where that fence is gonna be built, and we'll see if that's gonna be, whether we use the gym, whether we walk them down Police Park, but we just don't, there's just not much time.
Yeah, you're not gonna be able to.
The other part is, another good point is, we got everyday fire here, I don't think that one is, we have four days a week fire, so they're gonna get some movement during the day. Not that we wanna take away recess, but it just might be limited, what we can do compared to the whole soul.
And we did talk about that, and we said that this year might be tough.
It's gonna be tough, there's just nowhere to build, otherwise, we're back behind the building, playing in tar.
Yeah.
Yeah, in front of the building, but they're, they're always out in front of the building, in the grass, running around. But it's, the difference is, it'll be, you know, a grade, a whole grading. So, you know, we haven't, we don't have a solution yet, but yeah, we've chatted about it, we just haven't made a decision yet.
And what our intent would be, as far as playground, is the, the number one priority right now is to get the building up. Landowner is going to take the west side, as far as they possibly can, so my hope is, not guaranteed, but hope is that we can have that as prepped as much as possible by this time next year, that we can get the new playground and system installed around this time. That being said, though, it's gonna be very touch and go, as far as what can and can't be used, because that building will still be under active construction.
Yep.
It'll still be laid out in parking areas, so just to set fair expectations, we'll try to do everything we can to get some playground space back where the final place is, but it's gonna depend on the inspector, and what all we can feasibly give. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Any other questions, for Jordan?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jordan.
I, you have Mr. Vaki on, as under reports, he is currently participating in the event with the living high school, so, which is good. Item five, approving the agenda. I would like to entertain the deletion of item 7A. We've had some development in that, which will be on your next agenda in two weeks. So I'd like to entertain a motion with that change.
All motion?
Support.
Motion by Director Raha, supported by Director Laffey. Any discussion? All those in favor, second by a saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, approving the consent agenda, these are the minutes of the May 13th, 2024 regular meeting. Payrolls for the month of May 2024, in the amount of $709,921.37, and accounts payable for the month of May 2024, in the amount of $763,536.36.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Director Randa Satter.
Support.
Or by Director Laffey. Any discussion? All those in favor, second by a saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, personnel, item B, motions approve the non-renewal of Jennifer Raleigh from the following extracurricular activities, following spring draw, advisor, and one-act play coach, at the close of the 2023-2024 school year.
All motion approval.
Motion by Director Raha.
Support.
Support by Director Krytis Simon. Any discussion?
So now she can reapply to these positions, is that right?
That's my understanding, yes.
Repost it, whatever.
It'll be reposted, yep.
All those in favor, second by a saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, motion to approve the hiring of Jeremy Dietrich, to job number 262, ABS Special Education Instructor, in the high school, effective August 26, 2024, contingent upon receiving, an OFP from Minnesota Pelsby Board.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Director Randa Satter.
Support.
Support by Director Laffey. Any discussion? Lot of initials in there.
A lot of pieces of outfield placement, so we, we had it open for quite a while.
Okay.
I don't know how long, but long enough that, yeah, once, once he's hired, once we get past July 1st, then he can apply for an outfield permission in special ed, and we'll be okay.
Okay.
So it's contingent upon him receiving.
All those in favor, second by a saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I had to make, administrative business. Item A, a motion to approve payment in the amount of $7,785 to the committee for children to purchase second step elementary and second step middle school curriculum subscription for the period of November 8, 2024, to November 8, 2025.
So made, support.
Motion by Director Laffey, support by Director Randa Satter. Any discussion? Mr. Morrison, is this something that is?
It's a renewal.
A renewal?
Don't call me very exact.
Okay, all those in favor, second by a saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, motion to approve Mark Morrison's act as the identified official with authority. for zero six nine five dash zero one to authorize review and rectify users for the education identity access management system.
So made. Support.
Motion by Director Crowdy Simon, support by Director Rice.
This is a system for all, a lot of the funding, all the checks and balances, that I give access to everybody. No, I give access to the people. That I should.
I'll be over tomorrow.
That's all, he's just giving me the authority to do that.
Thank you for clarifying.
It's a mouthful.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, membership in the Minnesota State High School League as presented.
So made.
Motion by Director Laffey, support by Director Raha. And we need a roll call. And that is a resolution.
Director Randa Satter? Yes. Director Rice? Yes. Director Crowdy Simon? Yes. Director Laffey? Yes. Director Raha?
Yeah.
Cherokee.
Yes. Motion carries and passes. Item D, motion to approve the membership to the Minnesota School Boards Association for the period of July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and to authorize the payment of dues in the amount of seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars. All motion approval. Motion by Director Raha.
Support.
S...support by Director Crowdy Simon. Any discussion? I think we all use these, the board on a regular basis, or... They're great at getting information out, sometimes corporate information, but it's much approved. Or much appreciated, I should say. Any other discussion?
Yeah, and all the...I'll mix all the policy work they do for us too.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just time saver.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, motion to approve the contract with Arrowhead Regional Computing Consortium for specific services from July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. All motion? Motion by Director Raha.
Support.
Motion by Director Crowdy Simon. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F. Motion to approve the comprehensive arts strategic plan as presented.
So made.
Motion by Director Laffey.
Support.
Support by Director Rice. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to just mention, Nancy Carroll Brady, they've put a lot of time into this, a lot of effort. It's a positive thing and, um, but I...and some others to have been included in this, but they've been the two that did a lot of work, and it's just wanna recognize that.
Isn't that what the... The concept one has last year?
Yep, connecting the community, connecting all the arts, band, music, uh, and art, and, uh... So they've put in a lot of time and effort into this, so it'll be a positive.
Yeah, I like it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, motion to approve the resolution accept...accepting donations. Motion by Director Crowdy Simon.
Support.
Support by Director Laffey. Any discussion?
How was the all-night grad party next evening? Did it go good?
I didn't hear too much, I didn't hear anything negative.
No, no, it's good music.
I heard it was really good. They always have good prizes for the kids.
Yeah. Where did they...where did they just?
Yeah.
They got to go swimming too and things like that, right?
That I don't know.
They did?
They probably did. I don't know, it's true, but...
After twelve years, they finally found the tunnel.
Oh, right. Yeah. How long have I been coming to this school? Believe me, they found the tunnel a long time ago.
Make sure that the school away with the destruction of the building.
Oh, my goodness, one...one time, we had to actually have all the band kids empty their pockets because they all had flashlights. And we were like, empty your pocket, Mr. Snyder. He was right there by my side. We know what you do. Yeah.
What are you looking for? We gotta do a roll call.
Yep.
Sorry, I gotta work, I shouldn't. We gotta go on. No more gabbing. Yes. Director Rice?
Yeah.
Director Crowdy Simon?
Yes.
Director Laffey?
Yes.
Director Raha? Cherokee.
Yes, and we'd like to thank those entities for their donations.
Yes.
Item H through Q. Again, these are policy changes which we'll take action on at the next meeting. Again, I'll just read through them. Policy five eleven, student fundraising. Policy five twelve, school-sponsored student publications and activities. Policy five seventeen, student disability nondiscrimination. Policy five eighteen, you don't have to facilitate, do not intubate orders. Policy five nineteen, interviews of students by outside agencies. Policy five twenty, student surveys. Policy five twenty-three, policies incorporated by reference. Policy five twenty-five, violence prevention applicable to students and staff. Policy five twenty-seven, student use in parking of motor vehicles, patrols, inspections, and searches. And policy five twenty-eight, student parental family and marital nondiscrimination. So those will be before you at our next meeting. Item nine, any discussion? By the board members? I just wanna say congratulations to all the grads. I wanna thank Mary Jo, who puts a lot, a lot of effort into this, and the staff, who've got everything in order. Danielle for holding my hand while the ceremony...
You think it's...
Mr. Morrison? And Mr. Haake?
And Mrs. Zem.
Zem, yeah, I forgot. What was it, thirty-two minutes, thirty-six minutes?
It's usually...I...I didn't have it, but it's usually like...
There was a lot of people timing it out there.
I feel like it was quicker than normal, but... Okay.
So thanks to the...those who helped, and congratulations to all our grads.
And how were our little kids' state track meet? They did pretty good.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been asking around to see how they, and they did very well.
Olivia, Zoe, and Haley, and Zoe Plombon, Lily Johnson, and Olivia Peskusi.
Yeah.
Congratulations to them, they'll hopefully be back next year.
Yeah.
We've got pretty good girls tracking.
They're younger too. Okay, all?
Yeah, yeah.
Eighth grade and ninth, yeah.
This is...
As far as information goes, item ten.
Oh, no, Haley's in the room.
Right. Uh, it's been about a year for Mr. Morrison, and, uh, we need to perform an evaluation of Mr. Morrison soon.
Crazy.
And you're not even great yet. That's amazing.
Special shit.
I don't care how I can do it, it doesn't look like I'm getting old from this job, so...
The review or evaluation actually will be a closed session. Mr. Morrison does have the option to open it, should he choose to. If you don't have your items from the MSBA to look through on evals, superintendents, I think Lisa can get them for you. And, um, Lisa, help me out here, you made a suggestion to me. And that suggestion was...
In that, um, I just...my husband just went through this. So I was kind of like looking at what they did, and that's the exact same one we did. The Hibbing chose three goals, and then they, um, they just laid it out and said, here's the three goals, and they talked about it and discussed it. And then they met three times, and then this last, the last meeting, they sat as a board, closed, and just discussed them with him, and then they ranked him on that. So it kind of like, you've been with Mark for a year now, so you could do that, actually. Just say, these are the three goals, and we'll meet in three months, and, you know, we'll just, you know... Instead of having an evaluation and really not having any goals set in place yet for him, it's kind of counterproductive, so...
So we can plan on that for our next meeting. I'll have Lisa put that...
I'll get them all for you.
And post it also for the closed session, uh, just in case he chooses to open it.
So we plan to do that in two weeks after regular, maybe?
I would...I would like to do so, then it'll use as quickly as we can.
I'd like to go in there, it makes sense.
And if, uh, Lisa, I'll have you be the collection.
Yep.
As to the goals, and I'll give the factory goals. Any suggestions to me on that? Okay. Let's see...uh, Jordan?
I'll make the motion in a second.
Well, that was quite...
Motion by Director Randa Satter. Support by Director Laffey. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, time is five forty-two.